Mr. Mesa, Sanitary District. Roll call please.
Dr. Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Eaton.
Here.
President James Ferrell.
Present. Public comments. We do have some patrons here and Jim, are you?
Yes, thank you, President Ferrellman, members of the board. If you'll bear with me, I have several non-agenda comments. First one is that at your March Board meeting, as you recall, you approved a $5,741 bonus for the General Manager in lieu of giving him a pay raise, apparently with the idea that the bonus would not carry with it pension obligations. At that meeting, I questioned if this violated the California Constitution prohibition against government agencies in California giving retroactive compensation for services that had already been rendered. Or if it was not for that, and since it carried no obligation for the General Manager to continue working here, whether it was a gift of funds, both of those prohibited by the Constitution. District Council Burns pointed out several court cases, which he said made it now okay to provide bonuses of that sort for retention and recruitment purposes, despite the clear language in the Constitution that you shouldn't be able to do that. I actually went and read those cases, and they did not apply to this situation. They had to do with circumstances where there was uncertainty about the compensation of the public employee, like a negotiating group from the expiration of their contract to the start of the next one, and it was kind of a footnote about retention and recruitment bonuses maybe being okay, but it was not part of the case that was decided at that time. So I would again recommend, if you are wanting to make this a habit, of trying to give compensation that does not carry pension obligations with it by giving bonuses. You should revise the employee contract so that it's clear, as the Constitution requires, both to the employee and more importantly to the public, what the formula will be for granting that bonus, what it's going to be based on, when it will be given, and what amount it might be. If you do that, I think there's no problem with that, but the way it was done, I do not think was proper, and I don't think the cases that were cited supported it. Second thing, at the same meeting, you made a second gift of $50,000 to support the City of Costa Mesa homeless efforts, which is a very noble thing to do, but again, I questioned whether a special district of this kind, with all the restrictions on the money that it collects due to Proposition 218, actually has the discretion to support worthy causes that are not directly related to the ratepayers' property. Again, I was told that the district has some money that is unrestricted, and I indeed went back and found an obscure file on the county assessor's website that tells me what the 1% on my property tax bill is being allocated for, and there is a tiny little allocation in there for what it says is the Costa Mesa Sanitary District General Fund. So my property in Newport Beach is paying into that fund, and I looked at some other properties in Costa Mesa are not paying into that fund, including this property here. The fund does not seem to be related to trash collection, or I'm not sure what it's related to, it says "General Fund." And if a member of the public tries to trace where that money goes in our hopefully transparent district, it's not possible to do that, because you look at our comprehensive annual financial report, or popular annual financial report, it does not mention any general fund. And indeed, it appears, reading between the lines of those, as the treasurer pointed out at your last meeting, that that allocation, my $4, other people's $4, kind of randomly at different properties, in your wisdom, have gone into the waste, into the trash, the solid waste fund, which is an enterprise fund. So it's very complicated. I've given you money for a general fund, it's gone into this other fund, then it's being allocated now. So we're providing sewer service for the homeless, apparently using our solid waste enterprise fund. So there's something, I think the district really needs to, in its interest of transparency, it needs to rethink how it is reporting, what it gets, where it gets from, and what the restrictions are on it. The CAFER is very loose in saying we have millions of dollars of unrestricted money. I think most of it is highly restricted. And then, if you will bear with me, the very final comment I wanted to make. In researching this, I was trying to figure out why some properties are assessed this, why some are not. So I went back and looked at the district's document, back at the dates of its formation, and since this is the 75th anniversary of our district, I did notice the very first document is the formation of the district, which actually occurred on February 11th. That is the date that the Board of Supervisors declared as a result of an election that had been held three days before. Things worked really fast back then. Election was held on Tuesday. On Friday, February 11th, the Board of Supervisors created this district. I could not tell from that, it has a long legal description in it, so what I'm suggesting in recognition of our 75th anniversary, it might be good to actually put some of these milestones on our district website, showing what the original district was. You cannot tell from the resolution what the boundary was at that time, and apparently it's changed over the years, and I think that would be a good thing to do in recognition of our anniversary. Thank you. And we should have had a cake, because there was a study session on February 12th, the day after, we should have had a birthday cake. Thank you.
How do you know they didn't? Thank you, Jim. We'll have our attorney, Alan Burns, look into this and get back to you at a subsequent meeting.
Jim. Scott. The $50,000 we gave to the city has been characterized as a gift. I didn't particularly see that as a gift, but more, we pretty much had told the city that we wanted that $50,000 to be used for renovation and construction of sanitary facilities at the new building. I'd like Alan to determine whether that's a gift from us, or if that's the right word. Okay? Gift, gift to me just has a different connotation. Could you have Alan?
Yes.
Check that vernacular, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have him give us a report on all that.
Great, thanks, Jim.
Okay, let's move along. Any other public comments? Anybody have items of study? March 20th, 19, organic tonnage report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items number one and two are your standard reports that we present to you every month, and we don't have any presentations, we're just available to answer some questions. You may have them.
Any questions on that? Item three.
Two.
Two?
Well, he said one and two, we're going together.
Oh, one and two, yeah.
March 2019, code enforcement officer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Roberts will be giving his report.
Good morning, President Ferrellman, and members of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board. I'll try to poke my head above the podium here, so you can see me. Ladies and gentlemen.
I can see your new haircut, so you're good.
Thank you, sir. Ed Roberts, I'll be making the presentation of the code enforcement officer report for March 2019. During the course of the month of March, I conducted a series of seven proactive scavenging investigations through proactive patrol throughout the community, observed and detected several instances of scavenging. For the benefit of the Board of Directors, there's a map and brief description of each scenario, and nothing really of note. The Board, from time to time, will ask me if there's any repeat offenders during this last month out of the ordinary. Two folks that seem to be creating a habit of it. I'm dealing with that. They are indigent in nature, homeless folks, so I've had to reach out to the Costa Mesa staff personnel in reference to what their situation is, because their encampment is in proximity to the location that I observed the scavenging. Are there any questions from the Board of Directors in reference to the scavenging enforcement? Please.
Arlene.
I just had a comment on the College Park area.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could get the CRNR to make sure that the lid goes back down. They're all up, you know, as you ride around, you see kind of hit and miss of the lids, and they should be just automatically going back to help people, so.
Yes, ma'am. I'll take a look at that for you.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Jim, one quick question.
Yeah.
Ed, the repeat offenders, I mean, these are folks, obviously, the homeless folks, you know, with the alley behind Pepper Tree, in the multifamily situations where they have bins instead of our carts, are you able to tell those people to stop, or knowing you like I do, I'm sure you do, but are we allowed to enforce the people going into the yard things?
Sir, off of the verbiage of our ordinance, and our jurisdiction primarily falls on the single trash carts.
Just the carts?
That we have. By virtue of the way I do my patrol operations, I will set up shop at one end of the alley and kind of just monitor the activity. What's most effective for me is I wait till I can constitute a violation of our code, which is my purview and jurisdiction. So I'll just allow the individual to continue past the trash dumpster, and if they do, you know, open one of our carts, then it comes into my purview. If there is a problem, we cooperate very well with city staff. City code enforcement has their proactive code enforcement program that they're doing, and I do have a phone number, cellphone for the supervisor, for Renee. If it's a problematic individual, or he's setting up shop, for example, in an enclosure, I'll bring it to their attention and let them address it as they see fit.
I appreciate that.
Certainly.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is one of the repeat offenders on the Baker and Royal Palm Drive?
Yes, sir.
Same person.
Continue with the report. For the month, March 2019, through proactive patrols of the community, 119 properties were identified as being in violation of our code for trash carts being left out in public view. I've developed a group of residents who have my cellular phone number, they've got, they're interested in their community's appearance, so they'll reach out to me directly. Sometimes bypassing, I'll let them know if they get an opportunity after calling me, if they could formulate, I'm sorry, form a formal complaint, so that way we can track what they're doing. So I'm just being made aware of some of the folks that are, again, habitual. So I've started to see a resurgence of a couple of properties that have been identified as kind of repeat offenders. The frequency is, you know, sporadic, but it's, you know, once every two months, we'll see some sort of violation. So been working a couple of those properties that require a little bit more attention, but nothing really of note to the Board. There were no instances of graffiti, and upon conclusion, there is a map at the rear of the packet for you that kind of charts the activity of these scavengers. I have, I contain copies of all my presentations to you, and you can see there's always been a shift, and now it looks like it's spreading very equally throughout the community, whereas the last few months, we had it in the north end. Now it seems like it's a 50-50 split between both sides. Any questions for me?
Yeah, just real quick.
Certainly.
For the first time in several years, Iowa street resident is not on here.
Yes.
You know why?
Why that's it.
They sold their house and moved.
[laughing].
So the new resident is far more conscientious. The other one is, I have to pass on kudos to you, because I think you've talked to Cheryl Towns on New Hampshire Street several times. She is a very happy camper right now, called me a couple of weeks ago to tell me how efficient and how nice you were to her. So you portray us in the community to these folks that have an issue or a problem, and thank you for the attitude you take.
Certainly my pleasure.
But Cheryl is very happy with you, so thank you.
Anything else for the Board?
Yeah, thanks, Ed. Very, very good report, as usual.
Thank you all, it's appreciated.
Okay, let's move along to item four, food bank program.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was requested by the Board to bring back for discussion today. So staff has invited CRNR Environmental Services, which, who are partners with Waste Not OC, on trying to help in hunger, but in reducing food waste. So I think I was going to turn it over to Jeff Snow to do the introductions, and he's going to introduce Mike Leirakos, the Executive Director of Waste Not OC, and he'll give you a presentation.
Good morning, President Ferrellman and directors of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. I'm Jeff Snow, Vice President with CRNR Environmental Services, and one of the longest-serving Advisory Board members for Waste Not OC. My favorite job is being a dad, and while we struggle to, are we going to do the PowerPoint?
I have the PDF up there, I can just navigate through it.
Does, do one of you have the PowerPoint, so she can load it up? Because I'm pretty good at keeping boards entertained while we take a techno. So my favorite job's being a dad, so today's topic is food waste and finding the highest and best use for it, so I have some dad food waste jokes. If it's on your phone, we're probably not going to be able to get it to Novalani. Mike, do you have it on a flash drive?
No.
Okay, then we'll just do the PDF.
Can you take those posters down until it's appropriate to have them up? Just moving back. Mike, didn't you speak?
My wife would agree that I'm far too handsome to have you cover up and obstruct me. And thank you for the press being here.
That's what you said to me when that's.
Okay, so food waste and dad jokes. Why did the tomato turn red? It saw the salad dressing.
Bob, it's time to write these down.
I have to ask you to sit down here, I think.
What did the strawberry say to the flirtatious strawberry? If you weren't so fresh, we wouldn't be in this jam. Thank you, in particular to Director Schaefer, who saw this presentation at the Orange County Council of Governments in Costa Mesa a couple of months ago, and for reaching out to invite us. We're primarily an advocacy group, so for the opportunity to get in front of people and share our story and share our purpose.
Question real quick.
Yes, Director Perry.
Who did you present that to in Costa Mesa?
Orange County Council of Governments.
It was last Friday.
It was last week.
Last Friday.
At Disney?
Yeah.
You did that again, Mike?
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
Did you get to ride the Pirates of the Caribbean?
No.
Then I don't feel like I missed out on too much.
And actually, four of us were there Friday, so.
Great presentation.
Yeah, it was good.
So does that mean we can just do dad jokes instead?
No, just go through it real quick.
Okay, it's my great pleasure to introduce Mike Leirakos. Mike is a great American, great Greek-American. He is a restaurateur. His family and himself have been in the restaurant business for generations. He's currently the owner of the Cotella Grill, which is a fabulous restaurant on Cotella and State College?
Main Street.
Cotella and Main Street. Great breakfast, served around the clock. Breakfast is the most important meal of the day, so I eat it for all my meals throughout the day. It's frequented by the Angels, Anaheim Angels Organization. Mike and I met while serving on the Advisory Board for Waste Not OC, and when we were successful in securing funding from the county of Orange, and were in a position to hire a full-time executive director, Mike Leirakos was our unanimous choice. When I started with Waste Not OC three or four years ago, we achieved 1 million pounds of food recovered and distributed to the food insecure for that particular year. We are now doing 1.5 million tons a month, so we have had meteoric improvements in what we do. We still have a long way to go. So please welcome our partner, Mike Leirakos.
Thank you very much, members of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Since four of the five of you saw this presentation just a few days ago, I'm going to go pretty quick with it, but I want to explain what Waste Not OC is. It is a public, private, nonprofit entity. It is an effort to end hunger through the recovery of excess edible food, and in doing so, we also reduce food waste. So this is food that has, is typically at end of life, meaning it's excess, we have nowhere to go with it, and typically, we've been throwing that product away for years. I'm a restaurant guy, as Jeff mentioned, and I apologize, we didn't need to plug, but I appreciate it. But for many years, we did not donate food, because we were under the false assumption that the Health Department didn't allow it, and for many years, there was a fear of liability. Fortunately, there's federal Good Samaritan laws that protect us, that hold us harmless for donating, or donation of wholesome edible food, as long as it's been handled correctly. So we found the biggest issue was actually brand protection. Large-scale donors, the Ducks, Disney, the Angels, hotel chains, restaurant chains, their issue isn't necessarily liability. They know there's never been a successful prosecution of foodborne bacteria or an illness relating from donated food. What they're concerned with is their brand being protected. All of us who work with food make food for a reason, to serve people, not to get someone sick, and certainly not to throw it in the trash. There we go. So again, we're a coalition, it's public, private, nonprofit. Each one has a role. On the public side, you'll see who we work with. The county of Orange, waste recycling primarily, environmental health. We were the first county in the country to use health inspectors to inform and educate operators about the ability to donate excess edible food. We now have health inspectors not only going out in the routine inspection and informing, but also it is listed on the inspection report. So as I, as an operator, get my report, there will be a one paragraph on there explaining that there's a section of the California Food Handling Code that allows for donation of food. Then you'll see that we have cities by nature of the grant, the county grant that we received, which was seed money to get this program going throughout the county. We work with each city, and what we help each city do is implement a program through a uniform and, you know, a comprehensive program. We work with Parks and Recreation Department, because all these different events at public parks typically involve food. We work with building and planning, because if I'm opening a business, or a restaurant in a city, I need to submit my plans to the building department. It's a great way to educate about food waste diversion and food recovery. Also, upon the final completion of the building inspection, another opportunity to inform and educate. On the private side of it, we work with the trash hauling firms, because there's a net benefit not only to the city, but to the hauler, also the food industry. The private sector is what drives this. We just step aside and let them do their thing. They want to donate food, first of all, and secondly, they have the time and the talent, the ability to help out in many ways, logistically, with technology, with support, meaning food recovery materials, cold storage, logistics, delivery services. We really work with the private side of it. And then in the nonprofit area, every nonprofit that feeds people in Orange County is one of our partners. We do not compete with anyone, we augment what's already being done. So both Orange County food banks, all the various pantries, and the development of food recovery kitchens. Take the next slide. As you know, state legislation, what we call an unfunded mandate, the state passed legislation mandating a reduction in the amount of food waste that goes in the landfills. AB 1826 was the first one. It requires cities and businesses to have a food waste diversion plan. And then the next one, SB 1383, which is in the final steps of formulation of the regs, that adds a little bit more teeth into it. Quite honestly, that's the one we're all afraid of. That's the one that imposes fines and penalties for either businesses and municipalities who failed to reach that 50% mandate. And Jeff, if I'm, if you can jump in here and give a little bit more teeth, I'd appreciate it. You're the resident expert when it comes to state legislation. Okay. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. This is pretty much the way we work. We work with all these entities under that umbrella. So the healthcare providers, because we also identify people who are food insecure. You just talked about scavengers. Those are the people I always thought were food insecure, hungry people. What I didn't realize is recovered food only feeds 7% of the population, which is homeless. The majority of it feeds children, seniors, and working families. So it's not just the homeless population, it's people in our neighborhood who are working productive people, but they live in an expensive part of the country. It's not cheap to live in Orange County. And many times, at the end of the month, they run short on food money, so they end up eating, either skipping meals, or eating something that isn't healthy, because it's all they can afford. So you'll find under here again, environmental health, food waste generators, mentioning restaurants, hotels, grocery stores, jails, entertainment units or centers, schools, anybody that has a permit and is allowed to handle food is someone who's a waste generator. Healthcare providers, we work with all the various hospitals in Orange County, Chalk Hospital, Kaiser Permanente, the Family Resource Centers, asking, if we can go to the next slide, two insecurity screening questions. These are the private industry partners. You're going to see a vast array of different types of entities, from distributors, large-scale producers of food. You'll see up there ironically Cisco and US, the two largest food distribution companies in the country. Model enemies in litigation three years ago, but they work collaboratively on the Waste Not model. You'll see small restaurants, you're going to see supermarket chains, and then you'll see ancillary support companies, Yellow Cab. Yellow Cab was one that we came up with. They will run, they will shuttle food, they're just the wheels and the driver that transports food from point A to point B. We use them for schools, where we don't have the ability to get the food to a central kitchen. Typically, that food that is not eaten by students at 1:00 goes to an after-school program, and that food is consumed at an after-school program close by. Let's go to the next slide. Public partners, as we mentioned, the county, the state, through CalRecycle. CalRecycle, as you know, is part of the Air Resources Board. They make me shake, they keep me up at night, to be quite honest with you. But those are our state partners. On the county side, we mentioned some of those county agencies, and every city and school district.
Just a quick correction, CalRecycle is not part of the California Air Resources Board, but CalRecycle is under jeopardy of having their authority transferred to the Air Board if they are unsuccessful in implementing and enforcing all the current organics legislation. If every jurisdiction did what Costa Mesa Sanitary District has done, CalRecycle would be considered the golden head child, but not everybody is Costa Mesa Sanitary District. There are many cities who are obstinate about getting their organics out of the landfill and finding higher and better uses, so I just wanted to correct that. We believe, and Mike and I have been in many meetings together, Air Resource Board is sitting right next to CalRecycle, looking at them, licking their lips, waiting for the day where they get to take over the regulation of this industry. I don't want that to happen. Our cities do not want that to happen, and we hope that CalRecycle will continue to be our regulatory authority in the solid waste industry.
Is Costa Mesa part of this partnership? The City of Costa Mesa?
No.
Thank you for clarifying, appreciate it very much. Let's go to the next slide, then. Food insecurity partners, again, all of the nonprofits, you're going to see the two largest food banks, you're going to see healthcare providers, you'll see pantries, nonprofit agencies that feed people, and then you're going to see a couple of what we call Braggins Kitchen right there. These are food recovery kitchens. And next slide, please. This is an example of the outreach that we provide throughout the county. It's information for operators about food recovery. And this is basically the way it works in Orange County. Let's go to the next one. This is an example of what's on that, the inspection form at restaurants right there, that's the paragraph we discussed. Food recovery is a cost-effective tool in waste diversion. In other words, it is extremely expensive to remove food waste, once it becomes waste. It's heavy, it's expensive, it has to be diverted in a certain way, and typically, facilities are not close by, there's an added cost to it. The quickest, easiest, and best use of this food is to recover it while it's still edible and feed hungry people with it. This is an example of a benefit that we provide to municipalities and entities. It's the tracking information required to be com- It's the tracking information required to be compliant with SB 1383. We use Salesforce.org. We just completed a platform to the cost of over $25,000 to be able to track all the shared outreach points. So as the cities will send out a letter to operators or food waste generators, the municipality, the hauler, all these various touchpoints are captured by us. We have the, again, the health department inspectors, we have industry representatives. Over 500 food service salespeople in Southern California are out there talking to their customers about food recovery. We track all those various touchpoints, and then our own outreach people that go out there and work with them. That provides instant compliance with 1383 in terms of the outreach component. Let's go to the next one. As Jeff mentioned, this is 2017 numbers, 14 million pounds. Last year, 2018, over 17 million pounds. And this is the way that we actually recover food, using technology to track where it's at. As a donor, you will hit donate, what type of food, how many pounds, and a suggestion of what type of vehicle is needed to recover that food. It now links that with an available pantry who can receive that food, because they have space in their freezers or coolers, or they're serving right away. It'll logistically match that through an algorithm with the pantry that's closest. And then the middle part, it will match it with a food runner, whether that's a volunteer who will sign up to deliver food, or, and which has been trained by us and provided with equipment, or it's going to be a food service logistics operation that will use their refrigerated vehicles to transfer food. But that tech component, which right now we're using Chow Match, is the ability to match food and capture the amount of pounds tangibly. We also provide best practices. So we're working with not only food runners, but on the pantry side, these nonprofits, who typically are short on staff, they work with volunteers, and they lack the expertise. We provide them with food safety training and the guidelines to handle food safely. Food safety is our number-one priority. If anyone ever gets sick, and when it comes to recovered food, it's a huge problem. Our focus, and what has made us a national leader in this, is using food safety as a primary concern. This is an example of modules that we have on our website. Anybody who wants to volunteer will go through these modules and then have to take a 25-question quiz and get 23 questions right in order to be able to be a food runner, authorized food runner. Donation receipts, as we mentioned, the ability to track all this product, it's a huge advantage for a food waste generator. They're going to pay more. The reality is, someone's paying for this. They're going to pay more. I pay more to have my food waste removed. Anything I can do in terms of a donation for donating, or for a deduction for donating food, that I would have to end up diverting or throwing away in another few days is a huge advantage. And then the last part of this component is the ability to repurpose this food. We found that we could recover it, but basically, we were just trading dumpsters. What we needed was the ability to repurpose bulk food, take these donations, and either rework it into something completely different, or repackage it to extend the shelf life. Yes, sir?
Mike, ultimately, would the waste, would the waste go to CRNR and their facility in Paris, which handles organics, as well as tree trimmings and that kind of thing?
Yes, yes. Your waste hauler is responsible for removing and diverting that food waste.
The highest and best use for our food resource is to feed people. We should not feed machines in Paris when there's hungry people and the food is edible and wholesome. So CRNR is in a formal and full partnership with Waste Not OC to use the wholesome edible portion of surplus food to feed people. The next resort, and lower on the highest and best, would be to recover the energy and nutrients at the Roar facility. And if you haven't heard that term, we have named it Roar Regional Organics and Aerobic Recovery. And as you know, you are our original partner. From what I understand, you signed up off of blueprints, and your vision in partnering with this is incredible. I don't know what your rate is, Scott knows, but I now have massive demand from cities that we don't even, that CRNR doesn't even service. Your Belinda is a Republic city. They are offering me $119.50 a ton to get capacity. We don't have it. We built it for CRNR's customers, not for other people's customers. And SB 1383 is interesting. In three short years, 2022, residential food waste recycling will be required statewide. There's only one solution in the state that can take green waste and food waste co-collected, and that is Roar, and that is your solution. What does that mean? Every other city is going to get a fourth cart. If they have a three-cart program, trash, recycle, green, they're going to get a yellow food waste cart. They're going to have to have four trucks come down the street, upsetting Public Works because a trash truck does 20,000 times the wear and tear that a passenger vehicle does. Public Safety's not going to be real excited, because trash trucks are dangerous around children. And do you think that a hauler's going to be able to just put a whole nother pass into a program and not have to pass through the costs of it? The investment that you made in whatever it was, a couple dollars per month per home, to get a co-collected, highest and best solution, it's going to cost other cities $7 or $8 by 2022. I cannot tell you how incredible your vision was. But I digress. We're on food recovery today. Yes, Director Oden?
I would think one of the selling points for this would be the 2020 regulations for pounds-per-capita diversion. I think the city of Costa Mesa is close, and I like your data from a previous presentation on that topic. But I would think the cities are all, the cities and the sanitary districts, or whoever collects trash, or is responsible for reporting to the state, all are going to be in a bind to meet those 2020 regulations.
Director, I don't believe any city will be in as much of a bind in Orange County as Costa Mesa, because SB 1383 requires such onerous, detailed reporting by the pound. Which restaurant or supermarket donated, how many pounds, what was the temperature, who is their hauler? How are you going to track that with multiple haulers?
Exactly.
Waste Not OC, Waste Not OC offers an absolute turnkey through their technology. Everything goes through the app, everything is summarized, and they give one nice, neat report to the city, which will provide full compliance. And they'll do it in Costa Mesa for less than $20,000 a year.
Do we have a suggested hauler?
Do we have a suggested what?
Hauler.
Suggested hauler.
For the city of Costa Mesa.
Setting you up. Don't answer this question.
Thank you, Director.
Jim, I've got a couple, I've got like three, four questions. Hey, Mike, at your presentation, you listed four partnerships with haulers in Costa Mesa, or you was CRNR, Republic, and Waste Manager. What was the fourth one?
Edco, which operates. Edco operates in Buena Park. So they're the fourth Orange County hauler.
Are there any other haulers that operated Costa Mesa besides CRNR, Republic, Waste Management, or Edco?
Yes, there's 17 haulers.
But they're not, but they're not partnerships with you, right?
No, we went to the four major haulers that had contracts with cities.
Okay, good. I got a couple more questions. Do we donate, or do you donate any food to the recovery kitchens in Costa Mesa?
That's a great question. Actually, we're developing another recovery kitchen, which is Orange Coast College. They're building a $45 million facility that's going to house their culinary program. They've set aside in that planned space in one of those three kitchens just for food recovery and repurposing. The culinary students at Orange Coast College will repurpose that food, make it available for pantries in Costa Mesa. We'll also use area high schools as a feeder program to go into that culinary program.
Are there any after-school programs in Costa Mesa that we donate to, that the city donates to?
Yes, there are. And I don't know the names of them off the top of my head. I apologize, but there are. And typically, it's because logistically, we always look for that closest donor.
Is there any way we can find out the total tonnage that is donated in one year?
Yes, absolutely.
Costa Mesa?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a, that's where the cost comes into. It's detailed.
If we could add that to our total of tonnage recovered. But, so you answered all my questions, I think.
Director Perry, we have been funded by the County of Orange. Rare 5-0 votes from the Board of Supervisors the last three years. We have another time to the trough on May 7th. If any of you can come to the Board of Supervisors meeting and speak in support of it, that'd be wonderful. But Supervisor Andrew Doe is on our advisory board, and he has challenged us. He said, Jeff, Mike, the cities are the one benefiting from this. The cities are the ones that have to comply. The cities need to start partnering directly.
That's what we're coming from.
And the cost is so, so remarkable. The entire city of Costa Mesa, how many population?
116.
116,000 people. 116,000 people. We will end hunger in this city and divert material from landfills where it creates methane pollution for less than $20,000 a year, and provide all these reports. So we will likely get a 5-0 vote again this year to keep us afloat, but we've got to become sustainable in funding on our own, and we need help with that.
I just have one last thing. We're the lowest amount, we pay the lowest to CRNR for the program that we have. It's around $70, $71, which is compared to the $119 that you're going to be collecting soon. So we're the lowest as of today.
You guys have the most smoking deal ever.
Yep. Are you ready for questions, Mike?
I had a question.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, please do.
Go ahead, Armin.
On the school districts, are you in with Newport Mesa Unified School District at all?
Okay, so we have with us, we're very lucky, we have as our outreach coordinator, a former Orange Unified School District Board trustee, so can you explain the rest of schools?
So I was part of the Orange Unified School District and helped set up this program so that we're recovering food out of OUSD and then bringing it and serving it within our community. I know that in Anaheim, they're actually recovering food, and then they're getting it to the after-school programs, because often, that's the last meal that some of these kids eat. And so in Costa Mesa, we're currently working, correct? And so we are recovering food from every school district. We're working across the county right now to get every school district involved, so that everything that's recovered past the cafeteria food table that isn't eaten can then be repurposed. And that can be repurposed in any manner that the school district sees fit. In other words, if they want us to give that food to the students and the families. There's something called McKinley Vento students, and these are identified families that struggle with food insecurity. And so we're working on creating a database to reach those students and then give feedback as to how many we're reaching and what percentage we're reaching within any given community. And that can be in Costa Mesa or in Newport Unified as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is Tim Surridge. And you think about this, we have so many schools on free lunch programs. What does that mean? That means taxpayers are buying the lunch. The kids don't eat the food, and we throw it in the dumpster so that we can charge taxpayers even more to pick up the trash and bring it to a landfill where it creates pollution. What is wrong with us? This is not brilliant stuff that we're doing. It's just common-sense solutions. Let's take that food, let's set up a share table to start with, so that the kids can bring it home, because they may not have nutrition at home. And then let's have Yellow Cab come by, because they're bonded and certified. Uber can't do that. Yellow Cab will come and pick up the surplus that's not taken from the share table, and will bring it to a recovery kitchen where we can prolong the life, or we'll bring it directly to Share Ourselves, or Southwest Community, somewhere where we can get it to hungry people. This is, again, not brilliant, but it's the right thing to do everywhere. And even at $71.50, which you guys are not paying me anywhere near enough.
No, just don't go that far.
The cost that we're proposing to cities is $30 a ton. So we're saving, this is the biggest no-brainer, and we know everybody will get there, but we have yet to have one city come forward and say, we want the solution for our city, and we'll do our part to fund it. And there's, and you could do it through commercial rates, lots of ways to do it, but this city's going to be in the biggest trouble of them all, because you're going to have 17 commercial haulers and multiple food agencies, and, you know, for less than $20,000 a year, we hope that the Costa Mesa City Council, or we hope that the Costa Mesa Sanitary District will explore ways to do the right thing, to get the food out of the landfills and to feed hungry people, save the planet and end hunger at the same time. But we do need partnerships.
Have you done this presentation to the city council?
We have not.
Oh, you haven't?
Are you planning on doing that?
I'll defer to my full-time Waste Not OC partners.
I think we need to make this an agenda item.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. We'd love to. We'd love to.
I think that's on Scott's task this year as part of his evaluation.
Well, we have an opportunity Friday. We, once a quarter, the.
Liaison.
We have a liaison committee, which is the city and the three districts, the school district, the water district, and we meet quarterly to discuss topics of interest. We have a meeting this Friday, and I, I think this is something we need to put on our agenda for Friday, is to get the word out that you guys need to visit with these people, but I, a couple, go ahead, Armin.
And we need probably have a meeting independently with the city.
I.
And talk about the 17 haulers. I thought it was 12, it might be 17 haulers.
There's 17 haulers, but there's only really about six or eight that are active. 17 potential haulers.
I think that's what the ordinance calls.
17 allowed, right? Six or eight.
Well, we would appreciate any help with that. And the reality is, for example, man, you mentioned the school districts. Everybody is participating, but we're early on with it. So there's plenty of room to accelerate the program throughout. Again, it's a comprehensive approach through the school districts, with the city, with you. There's a way of getting everybody on board.
Couple of quick questions.
Certainly.
One of the, I look at this Food Insecurity Partners slide, and to me, what really stands out is, have you talked to Shannon at Someone Carries Soup Kitchen?
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
Are they part of the program?
They are recipients, they are part of the program. Every nonprofit that feeds people is part of the program. Capacity and what role they can play is always the issue.
I think that's probably where I'm going with that, is how much capacity does Shannon accept? I mean, they do a pretty aggressive fundraising job here in Costa Mesa. I mean, I know personally how much money, I know her pretty well. They focus very heavily on raising funds to purchase product to make their food. If you guys could help them, I just, that just bothers me that they're.
They get some every day.
Yeah, I understand that. In terms, a couple of times, Mike, you mentioned brand protection. Is that a liability thing where, say, some food manufacturer, if I'm using the right term, doesn't want their name on there that's going out to someone else from a liability issue? Or is that just to keep them?
No, it's not necessarily a liability issue. The brand is, issue arises in three areas. One, it's going to be should someone get sick, should something happened. We use the example of the Angels when we first approached them at the program. They jumped on it, and they came back a couple weeks later, and they go, no, we can't afford for a homeless guy in the riverbed to get sick on a hot dog with an angel's wrapper. You know, the media will skewer us, it'll, you know, we're trying to do the right thing. But more importantly, a lot of companies have built their brand on a regional name, so they would prefer that product not get out there. In other words, they don't want people to know they're donating, because now more people will hit them up, or it shows some kind of a deficiency in their operation. So many times, donors would want to be anonymous. That's how they protect their brand. And then other times, they want that food to go out of the market, out of the area. So there's, brand protection comes in different forms.
Big insurance agent, I always look at the worst-case scenario, but.
Yeah.
The last thing I had is, you talked about the fines that municipalities are going to start having to pay in 2023, 2025. That's under 1383.
Correct.
Scott, or if you guys know the answer, if the requirements aren't met, and the city of Costa Mesa has to start paying those fines, that doesn't fall back to us at all, does it?
No.
We're not going to get fined.
It's ultimately up to the city to comply with those regulations.
It's ultimately up to the city to comply with those regulations.
That's a pretty big selling point.
It is, it is.
To get the cities involved.
And I think there's a bigger selling point, and that is fines and penalties are one things, but the fear of litigation is another one. If we are not compliant, then you know there are groups that are going to come and come after the various entities, and they'll take the shotgun approach, they'll go after everybody.
Okay, thank you.
On the brand protection, Director Schaefer, a member of our Advisory Board is Dr. Al Baroudi. He is the VP of Food Safety for the Cheesecake Factory chain. So, we have a level of expertise that's governing our approach that's second to none. Mike and Operations, I believe we're the only food recovery coalition that's taking the temperature of all of our food and tracking the time. And time and temperature are the two dashboard monitors for keeping food safe. We know it won't be through our model that somebody gets sick. We keep our food safe, we keep it nutritious, and, you know, this has been going on for years. We've all seen people in the dumpster feeding themselves. We're just doing it in a way that brings respect and dignity to human beings, and we're accelerating the results in an exponential way.
Thank you.
We should probably go ahead and move on here, but great information. One final question, and that is, there's so many programs involved with each other in this coordination thing. Do you meet on a regular basis to make sure every, all the bases are getting covered? I mean...
Yeah, that's a really good question, and if I can just give you one example, we always explain what our role is. Each one of these entities that work with, on feeding hungry people, we equate them as classically trained musicians, but if you go to a symphony an hour before and they're all playing their instrument, it sounds terrible. We provide the sheet of music, and we are the conductor. So, yes, it's ongoing, it isn't periodic, it's ongoing. We look at that balance that's required to be effective. For example, we're going to provide refrigeration equipment to a pantry, we're going to provide a software for a food bank or a tractor-trailer to second harvest so that they can pick up at all the Costco stores. We work together to augment what they do, and it takes constant collaboration.
You know, I really, I'm sorry, Jeff, just, I'll give this to staff, I think. I really think we need to make a huge effort to get to the city. I don't know what it's going to take, whether it's going to take meetings with some of us and you, and I understand they're, you know, they're trying to get a new city manager on board, but this, this is huge. I mean, I think, not just from the, it's huge not from the, just the humanitarian standpoint, but we're all elected officials in charge of protecting the interest of a bunch of people, and if the city has to start paying these fines and they can't get cooperation amongst their various haulers, I think we need to take something and push them. And Scott, I really think we need to reach out to the city and say, "Hey, we need to sit down and get serious." We've talked about it for years at liaison meetings, "Hey, guys, you know, these regulations are coming up," and the attitude from the city has been, "Yeah, we'll handle that when it gets here." That's nonsense. So, whatever we can do, and you know how I feel about it, so.
You have one final question?
Yes, I do. Do you think that you have some kind of bullet points that you can give to Scott so we could have, he could make a presentation Friday about this? You know, just bullet points of, you know, that would be meaningful, that they would understand from this, because there's, liaisons is water district, it's a school district, it's us, city, so we all come together, and it's really worth it to be able to, you know, have, be a leader in that and us to explain it through Scott.
We can and will end hunger. Orange County will be the first county in the United States of America to declare an end to hunger. It's very exciting. We have a 62 million meal gap. We're now at 15 million meals a year, so we've got a ways to go, but we still have 2 million tons of food going into our landfills. So, the resources are there, the simple model is there that works, and we appreciate your support, and we do know there's actions you can take to support this initiative. The, your agency can put out a position statement, you can promote it on your website, even though you don't have direct jurisdiction over the commercial sector. There are things that you can do, and we ask you to explore those. And I'm in a detour because you never know when you're going to get run over by a truck or win the lottery. My experience this past year helping to represent CRNR has been incredible. I pinch myself every morning that I'm part of this team, and I work with over 50 different municipalities. I want you to know that your staff, Scott Carroll, Noelani, Gina, Nobila, you have world-class people that are a cut above most city staff members that I work with. They are incredible. We have one of the most robust economies that this nation has ever experienced. CRNR just lost one of our stars yesterday, David Latham, who has been overseeing operations here. It's hard to keep great people right now, so I encourage you to look at your staff's compensation programs and everything else because they're winners and you don't want to lose them. That was probably inappropriate, President Ferryman, but I might win the lottery tomorrow.
We didn't, we had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, you set this up.
Not only is he pushing for more money for CRNR, now he's pushing for you guys. Come on.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate the time. I just want to add one last thing. The Waste Not OC model is being adopted by the state of Mississippi, by jurisdictions all around the country, and you can be very proud that it started here in Orange County.
Thank you, Mike. Let's move along. CRNR customer price index increase request.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Nobila Guzman is going to begin this report. This is regarding CRNR's request for consumer price index increase in the rates.
Good morning, President Ferryman, members of the board. Per our 2018 CRNR agreement, CRNR can come every two years and request a CPI increase. We receive their CPI increase for the next two years on March 29th. They are asking for a 5.8 CPI increase for the next two years, so it would be effective July 1st, 2019, and it would go through June 30th, 2021, 2020.
Is that, is that each year?
It's 5.8 for the next two years.
So, it's about half that.
One-time increase.
Mm-hmm. Well, every two years, they can come back with a one-time increase. At this time, we are asking that you direct our district treasurer, Mr. Mark Davis, to audit the profit margin for CRNR, for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. During negotiations, they did ask that those reports not become public record, so Mr. Mark Davis would need to go and revise the information at CRNR facilities. The actual request for a CPI increase will not come to the board for action until the June 20, the June 29th board meeting, I believe, or...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh board meeting, and that is because in the May board meeting, we have a public hearing for a rate increase, and it is ill-advised that the board adopt or grant a CPI increase before residents have the opportunity to protest the rate increase. I am available for any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Bob?
The indexes that are being used, were those decided by the contract?
Yes, that was decided during negotiations because our budget is a two-year budget. It was decided to use a 24-month CPI increase instead of a 12-month CPI increase.
Particular LA, Anaheim?
Yes, it is the same one that is used for staff CPI increase. To make it easier for budget purposes, we decided to use the same.
Well, I guess I would have a suggestion that since it's a two-year increase, maybe we do, or consider part of it one year and part of it the next, rather than a one-time increase. And these indices are generally lagged two years in the data that is presented. So, the actual last two years, COP, Consumer Price Index, was 2% and 3%, and I forget which year. This is basically data from three years, three years, I hold a four finger, just three years ago. The data for this year, the data for last year and the year before won't be available, you know, they'll come due two years after the actual fact. You know, I think it's inappropriate to give this larger percentage increase in light of the fact that we're having trash rate increases. You know, I'm getting a lot of feedback from my neighborhood association, next-door neighbor, whatever they call it. You know, and they basically quote 33.2%, which is the cumulative potential increases over the next five years. And, you know, and I tell them on their, you know, that's actually 1.2, you know, it's a minimum of the dollar twenty per year, which when I came on the board, you know, Gary Monahan said that's less than a, we had a sewer rate increase at that time, and they said that's less than a couple of lock dates. That doesn't seem to cut it. Thirty-three percent is the number that, you know, the dissenters or activists or whomever are focusing on. So, if I, if we can mellow this out a little bit, we're actually looking at a $400,000 increase, part of it is this 5-point-whatever-percent-it-is increase in costs for next year. And I, for one, as a citizen and two, as a board member, think those, that type of cost increase is not going to be covered by our 4%, 7%, 7%, 7% and 6% increases. So, I'm not in favor of the haul increase being in one year.
This is the first increase to CRNR rates in over 10 years.
We're not talking about history, we're talking about this year.
Yes, so when the item comes to the board in June, you will have options of either granting a no CPI increase, half a percent increase, or the 5.8. So, the board will have the chance to kind of discuss and see what's appropriate and what they wish to grant.
Good question, Jim.
Mike?
You know what, when I looked over the statistics, and maybe, Mark, if you, if this is going to be directed at you, when I looked at the CPI all-urban indexes, which goes back to 2007, the highest number I could see was like 4.2 or 4.3. If they're asking for a 5.8, does that mean they've increased, their costs have increased above the CPI? Is that how I should look at it? Or maybe you'll know that once you get in and look at their books, so to speak. I'm confused.
Is that directed to Mark, or?
That's whoever can answer my inane question.
I'll take a stab at that. The 5.8% increase that's being requested was based upon looking at the most recent CPI factor, then going back 24 months and looking at what the factor was at that point in time, and looking at the difference in the growth over those, that 24-month period, not a two-year block, but a monthly block that's published every month. Monthly block over that 24-month period was 5.8%. I think what staff is asking, and what's in the contract, is that part of this, whether or not CRNR would be eligible for an increase, would be dependent upon whether their profit margin, when we take a look at their profit margin, whether that supports that increase, meaning that we'll come back, we'll take a look at whatever they can show us to demonstrate that their costs have exceeded that amount, then they could be eligible for up to that at your discretion.
For up to that. So, we could say, "We don't like the 5.8, but we see based on this, we can give you a 2.1." So, we have that room.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we'll have that opportunity if it turns out that way?
I believe staff's going to bring it back at the time of the budget adoption, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Let's move along to item six.
Mr. President, if I could just some clarification, the recommendation is to authorize district treasurer to review CRNR's profit margin with respect to service provided the district. Are you authorizing district treasurer to do that?
I would say yes. Yeah, I, you just authorize him to look at the books, that's all we're asking. Yeah.
Okay, I just need some clarification.
That's where I'm coming from, I think.
You need a vote on, you need a vote on that?
It's appropriate.
That would be nice to have it up for the record.
I'll move that we authorize the treasurer to make the study of the CRNR profit.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Jeff, can I have one of your cards?
I will send you your information. I'm a environmentalist, I don't like to kill trees.
Does Scott have your contact information?
Yeah, I might have an extra card for you.
Okay, item six, consider one of the four alternative designs for the project of 318, President pump station reconstruction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before, I'll have Rob, if we bring, we're going to bring the boards back for your review in here in a second, and I'll have, while staff does that, Rob will go into details again about the four designs. Before he does that, I would do like to brief the board on what we, on our efforts for community outreach. As you might recall, when we first presented this, these options to the board, the board directed staff to reach out to the neighborhoods to get some feedback if there's any specific desires or specific designs they prefer in their neighborhood. And so, we first reached out to the neighborhood on March 2nd, where we, where it's out, actually in the cul-de-sac there, to meet with the neighbors, to share the design, the four options, and then actually really walk the site, answer questions. Unfortunately, that day was one of the very rainy, wet day, so we think the weather might have had something to do with the very low turnout. We had one resident that did show up and that we talked to and did receive some good information. We then presented the four options to our Citizens Advisory Committee, and that was later in the month, and so, Rob gave a very detailed description of all four plans. It was a very well, I believe, a very well-engaged meeting. The CAC members asked a lot of good questions. In the end, they did recommend alternative number two because it's within our budget. As you'll hear from Rob, there are some studies or some studies we have to do on that design, specifically the testing of the concrete, the concrete in the drywall, the dry-wetwell or the dry vault, to ensure that that's stable enough. If not, then the CAC recommended alternative number three. So, going back to the neighborhood, because we did receive, because there was only one person that showed up, we, again, we were really concerned, and we really wanted to engage with the residents on these options. So, the next step we took was, we mailed photo simulations to 24 property owners on President Place, and the photo simulations showed where the proposed electrical panel will be located in the right of way. We also gave them on, as you see on the designs there on alternative four, we gave that photo simulations to the residents, and we asked them, we gave them a survey, we asked them, "Do you prefer the pump station in the cul-de-sac, or do you prefer it in the original easement?" And included in their survey was a prepaid self-addressed envelope, so there was no cost to the residents. All they had to do is check one box and mail it back to us. Of the 24 residents we contacted, we received eight surveys for return to us, which is about 33% return ratio. Of those eight surveys, five were against the proposal in the cul-de-sac, three were in favor in the cul-de-sac. And so, that's just a little brief overview of the outreach we've done or we conducted with the residents on President Place. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Rob, and he's going to go into more details on the alternatives. And then, what staff is recommending today is to kind of give us an idea of which alternative you're leaning on, and then we'll bring this back on your April board meeting for... you're leaning on, and then we'll bring this back on your April board meeting for final consideration.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. We've been here a number of times to discuss the four options. Scott gave a very good presentation on what the CAC had to say, and what the neighborhood had to say. We also have one property owner here, Dane Bauer, who wishes to speak today, and he owns the property where the pump station is currently located, and if we reconstruct, then in the easement, then we would be considering either options one, two, or three, but not four. Four is out in the cul-de-sac. So not only do you have Mr. Bauer here, we have our maintenance superintendent, Steve Conno, and we have our pump station specialist, Tony Gomez here, who would also like to speak. I would be happy to review anything in the staff report prior to them speaking, but maybe you want to hear them first before I go back and give a summary. I think you've probably read the staff report, I can give whatever level of detail you wish. I do suggest you allow the speakers to speak first, though, and then I'll come back and we'll go over some details.
Okay, can I bother you for your, did you fill out the green?
You know, I came here mostly, having, I've worked with Rob for the past about eight months or so, I bought the property back in June, with the understanding of the easement and the construction of the pump station, with a little bit of brief history on the pump station. I'm primarily here to learn about the four options. Rob's gonna create a job by working with me and then kind of keeping me up to speed. The option, there is an option down where the pump station's located currently that would protrude into my property, so I would like to just comfortably say, I'd like to protect that, one option, from, from, you know, my perspective. I'd like, if there's a possibility to not protrude into my property, to consider the alternative options. That's what I'm here for. Also, the, the current station is, it's an older station from my understanding, so there is smell from time to time that builds onto my property. High flow happens typically on the weekends at night, and it sometimes reaches even into back and front yard. So whatever option we choose to do a, a good job of, of using all the current new technologies to manage the smell of life, the reason I purchased the property, my fiancee and I, was because we, we found the neighborhood, we love the neighborhood, love the people in it, and there's quite a bit of value, I think, of the West End Rosa Mesa, and so I think we should do whatever it takes to kind of secure that value, because the years of, kind of, the property values in this neighborhood, like, if we keep going up, that means more property tax for the, the city. And so, I would just publicly want to state, let's, let's do the right thing for the neighborhood, for the safety of the maintenance personnel, for any emergencies that could happen in the future, and...
Are you favoring any, any one alternative at all, or?
When, when I spoke with Rob, so I, I mailed in my letter, and mine was the, the cul-de-sac option, and that was for a couple reasons. One, I felt like it would give us better access for maintenance, retaining, or emergency to happen, easier access for the city to get to. And I felt like construction back in the canyon would be difficult, safety, cost, and, and, for access for people getting in and out of the canyon, which is, you know, people going in and out there daily, they love the canyon, it's such an amazing place, and so to keep that open for public use during construction. Also, from what I spoke to Rob, the cul-de-sac option would take significantly less time to build, which is positive in my mind, and, I believe those are the, the main reasons.
Rob, do you want to comment on?
Yes, thank you. I, I would be happy to answer some of those concerns. With regard to, with regard to imposing on Mr. Bauer's property, the, first of all, all the proposals in front of you are staying within our easement. What Mr. Bauer is really referring to is that if we fit any of the, no, I should say options one and three, thank you.
One and three, do, do expand our footprint out there to the limits of our easement. So right now, this is option two, there's the pump station right there, that square, and this is Mr. Bauer's wall, his wall, and that's the limits of our easement. So we will be with, option one, we are removing his, part of his wall. Option three, we are removing part of his wall, right here. Option two, we haven't finished design on this, but we may find out, we want to be over here even though we're over here. But if we're gonna keep this less expensive, we'll probably be where we are, so we might not have to remove his wall. But we did put money in the budget to do that. We also have to trim the trees. The trees really overhang from Mr. Bauer's property and the properties over here, that's a canopy over the top, and we are going to have to buzzsaw down one, this easement line, and buzzsaw trees off on that side. So that's what Mr. Bauer is referring to as to being on his property. We would just be further onto his property. The property owner up here, we, we would be further onto his property too, but his property's up the slope and up here, so he would never even notice the difference between that and this for being a little further up the slope.
I'm sorry, just real quick, the residence property is on the left of the, of our?
Mr. Bauer's property is right here.
Oh, this one?
Yes, and this is, this is the driveway easement that goes to the back, and that's where our current pump station is. So this is Mr. Bauer's property right here.
Where's the wall you're referring to?
The walls will be, okay, so here's what's out there right now, just this rectangular area with the pump station all in one. So where would the walls be? This would be a retaining wall.
Okay, so when we-
And this would be a retaining, excuse me.
When we look at these drawings, we're looking from the back out towards President.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had it, I was thinking it was the other-
And this is the edge of the park.
Thank you.
And this is the pedestrian access.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, and-
Real, real quick.
Sure.
And when I, I spoke with, I think it's Arbor, right, that works with trees?
Yes.
Buzzsawing that big of a tree does, I mean, the tree's gonna end up collapsing into my property, so it's not just a simple buzzsaw, it's gonna take, it's gonna be, you know, you're gonna have to do something with the arch, it's, it's a giant tree, I don't know how tall, but maybe fifty feet, not maybe tall.
Right, as the trees are right now, they would interfere with construction. We have to have a crane in there.
Is that, are those ficus trees?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And then to address Mr. Bauer's concern about odor, we don't really have any odor control equipment out there, and the proposed station has one measure designed into it, and it has another measure designed into it that can also be put into play, and we do have updates in technology and all, and I'm pretty confident we can take care of the odor in the future as part of the project. We did put that in the design and in the budget. So that's an answer to his questions unless you have any more questions about his comments.
Anybody have a question?
Well, I don't have a question, but I would like to compliment Mr. Bauer on, you know, his assessment. When the food safety people were here, they said safety was their biggest concern. And in this project, safety should be our biggest concern, and the, and the safety would be impinged on when the construction is being done. It's a cramped site, you can't get many pieces of equipment back up that alley to construct any, any one of the three alternatives that are back up in, in the thing. So the, the, the building site offers tremendous concerns. There's an overhead power line back there that was gonna limit the, the, the construction activities, the contractor's construction activities. The maintenance, you know, in the middle of the night, if there's an emergency, any one of our, any one of our people that are on duty have to be able to probably back down that alley, although there's, you know, there, there is a detention time, you know, probably six or eight hours. I don't believe all of our maintenance staff can back that equipment down that so-called alleyway. So, you know, the emergency response is gonna be more difficult. We've had at least two, and maybe one major sanitary sewer overflow from that station. We are gonna get a new station, no matter, you know, which of the alternatives are there, and it probably is enhanced emergency equipment, but I saw our Vector truck, and, and it was the biggest one of the two, come out of a filling station this morning, it's like an eighteen wheeler. It's probably easier to back down that alley than an eighteen wheeler. There is a smaller Vector truck, you know, which would be half the capacity, which I don't think necessarily would be the favorable alternative, just because it's smaller, it has half the capacity of the bigger one, and that's the one that we can get in there, and so we would try to deal with the emergency with, with that small piece of equipment, smaller piece of equipment, partly because the bigger one is more difficult to get in there. So I think from a safety standpoint, I don't think there's anything more paramount to this agency than to try to be safe, or to make facilities that are safe. Employees, the public, the residents, all of those things should be, the safety should be the first criteria. Emergency response is probably the second criteria. You know, I think we have the modern means of dealing with odor control, but safety and emergency response, in my mind, is what dictates us imposing on the three neighbors that voted against, or five neighbors that voted against the cul-de-sac option. They probably weren't aware of the safety and the emergency response aspects of, that was not included in, in the card that they checked about. What they want, what, what they were responding to was, it is gonna be an impact for four months to build the, say, the cul-de-sac option. It's gonna be an impact on them for six months if we build one of those alternatives back in the alley. And I don't think they realize, there, there is not much room there, and there's only one piece of contractor equipment to go down that alley and probably do the construction at a time, a big piece of equipment. The rest of them are gonna be parked out in the cul-de-sac, you know, waiting their turn or deployed there. You know, I, I, I think it's a no-brainer to, to put safety and emergency response at the top of this, of these criteria to rebuild that pump station. That pump station will be there for the next thirty years. It won't be noticeable once the four, five-month construction period is done. Anyway.
Thank you. That was very well spoken. If I may give a couple of comments, and then we'll have Steve Conno and Tony Gomez speak.
Before you get there, Arlene had a question.
No, I just, that's what I was gonna ask, if they could speak.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate what Director Uden said. There are, there is a power pole right here, and the power lines go this way, and all the contractors wanted us to move the emergency storage vault away from this side because the power lines are overhead, and I'll refer to the crane again. The crane, we have to have a crane back there to install everything, and the crane is gonna be as high as the power lines. We did meet with Edison a number of times, the power lines are gonna stay from here to here, and then there is one line from here to here, and that is a safety concern, no doubt about it. And the other thing about backing a truck down, and once you have one truck down there, where's the rest of them go? That is a true statement. So those were very important items that Director Uden brought up. So maybe now Mr. Tony Gomez or Mr. Conno?
Here's your Tony.
Good morning. Yeah, my name is Steve Conno, Waste Water Superintendent, and Tony Gomez is Skated Technician. We have a couple of concerns about moving the cul-de-sac out into the cul-de-sac. For us, safety is also our number one priority. By saying that, when we do maintenance on our pump stations, we have wells that are open, vaults that are also open. With the high footage of traffic that goes through there, you know, you get your lookie-loos. So there's that safe, right, the precaution right there, and also, my crew, if they have to answer questions with residents, you know, hey, what are you guys doing, it'll distract my guys, and, you know, accidents do happen. Also, for emergency, if we do have to respond, you know, we do bring trucks, and being in a cul-de-sac, there's not a lot of parking there anyways, so we'll be taking up a lot of spots, possibly blocking residents' driveways, which will be aggravating. Also, just doing regular maintenance, we're there at least once a week, so, you know, we have our trucks there, and when we do the annual, it's more thorough, so we bring more trucks also, and then we clean the wells, we bring our vac trucks there too, so that whole cul-de-sac will be pretty full with trucks. Also, if we, if we move the wet well to the cul-de-sac, the panel will be kind of far from what we usually like them. Usually, we try to keep our pumps to the panels maybe within what, fifty feet for the cable. If we go longer than that, we have to start using a junction box, where that can cause issues too for the power. These junction boxes will be susceptible to corrosion, also moisture can get into the power cables, start messing up our power cables operating the pumps. Tony, he's there more than me, so I'll let him also do his concerns.
Good morning, my name is Tony. Well, the concerns I have is practically what Steve mentioned. There will be a lot of traffic while we're doing maintenance, obstructing the main driveways for three residents. There's no room for all trucks to, to fit in that area, so we'll have one truck at a time, and that one truck alone would, would basically allow, not allow, people to come in and out. So I understand your, your wife is a nurse, and sometimes she's on call, so she needs to leave right away, and if that happened to be in an emergency or while we perform maintenance, our trucks- And if that happened to be in an emergency or while we perform maintenance, our trucks would not be able to move out of the way immediately. It would take time because the crane truck has a leg, they have to be set up for the weight. So, that way, the suspension would not get affected. And just removing all that stuff would take maybe at least 45 minutes. So, also, Scott mentioned that they visited the area while it was raining. There was a lot of water going in there. There's actually a storm drain. Most of the water flows in the side of the cul-de-sac, and it's kind of like a small river. So, if we do perform maintenance during rain, that would affect whatever we're doing. Do you have a question, sir?
I was talking, trying to talk to, I thought some people were standing outside looking to come into the meeting.
Okay. Well, if you guys have any more questions for us?
I do. You said there's probably some safety dangers from looky-loos. You set up barricades for your staff to do whatever they have to do in the.
The wet well.
And so, that would prevent, that makes the public looky-loos, you know, have to keep their distance.
Right.
And if there's special circumstances at a particular pump station, you just have to make your barricades big enough, you know, to keep them away from the dangers.
You're right.
And those are standard procedures that I'm sure you use at all the pump stations. I asked for a video of how you maintain pump stations, like the Abilmore Pump Station. That's in a cul-de-sac. I believe that you would do your maintenance probably at a time during the day when it would be least impacted. You work, you work during the day normally.
Right.
So, I would think that the impacts to neighbors, there will be some if the station ends up getting built in the cul-de-sac. But I think, it's hard for me to envision your truck being bigger than that pump station and totally blocking the intersection.
Well, every time I visit the pump station, there's several cars there.
Yes.
I, and I'm sure you guys noticed that, I drive a utility truck, it's a small pickup truck. It's not as huge as the other trucks. Now, where I do park, it's sometimes next to, next to the station, which is the driveway that next to, if I can show you guys so you have that vision. Here on the cul-de-sac, this is basically the same size as a pickup. There's always a car here, there's always cars in this area like this too. So, I can park here because I'd be obstructing the entrance in and out of there. I usually park here. So, if I come in with the crane truck, I would have to park here on this area. As you can see, it would be minimal space between here and there, coming in and out. Not necessarily blocking the driveway, but blocking the entrance into the cul-de-sac. Now, if we bring several trucks, so, we have to have one truck here and maybe another truck here. That alone will block everything. So, the main concern is there's three driveways. If those three driveways, we may be able to mention or advise when we come in, you know, so that way, they can park their cars outside. But other things, like for instance, the rain, this water flow here goes up to this level. And it goes over the sidewalk. So, it's a heavy, heavy, heavy rain that comes all the way over here to the storm drain. That's also a safety concern. If you step over into that water, that might even pull you because it's such a strong current. Those are a number of concerns that we have. You mentioned bringing trucks in here. The only truck that mainly we'll be bringing inside most of the time will be the pickup truck or the crane truck. The way that station is going to be built, we're going to try to maintain the pump station with the pumps and try not to use a back truck as much as possible, such as, you know, California, you're familiar with that, how often we clean it. And we're trying to minimize the problems and concerns to people. Any more questions?
So, how often would you need to visit the station for maintenance?
At least once a year.
Okay.
At least once a year, and that's not counting emergencies.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Rob, do you have any recommendation, keeping in mind security first and, you know, functionality and all? I mean, what's your gut feel on this? And with all the years of experience you've had, I for one am going to place a lot of my judgment on what you have to say.
Excuse me, and thank you. Everyone had a great opinion. These are four engineered designs, and they all work very well. Director, I believe in Director Uden's comments that safety during construction and emergency response. I think that during construction, one of the, one contractor told me it would take him six months because of the limited access back there to construct one vault at a time, kind of, because there's not enough room back there to get trucks here, there, and everywhere. And I find that backing a large vector truck to get to the pump station, that is not a proper way to access a pump station. So, unfortunately for the maintenance crew, I still believe in the cul-de-sac option because it's right there for them. I think that it actually makes their life easier. But it does put it right in front of everybody, and there's odor control. But from a safety standpoint and emergency response, the cul-de-sac option works the best. However, we as engineers can make any of these four designs work, and, because that's what we do.
If I may.
What about the cost of that one?
Well, before, if you, one thing we're not talking about is the enclosure, where that's going to be located. Can you remind the board where that would be located in the cul-de-sac?
Thank you.
And how big that enclosure is going to be?
Tony was correct that all the water comes down this side, and it's a lot of water. Actually, Director Uden and I met with the city yesterday, and they call this a hotspot because water goes beyond the right-of-way onto private property. And the city may come back and put another catch basin along here and tie it to that storm drain, and then it would be underground, and that would greatly reduce the flows in this area. So, one of the reasons we put the emergency storage vault over here was because it wouldn't get in the way of parking. But we cannot put it there after what we learned from the, what we learned from the residents about the amount of water here. That would have to go on this side, which can be done, but it's just another, it's another challenge we would have to meet. So, this could probably be moved over here, and then this pipe here would go that way.
You also talked about the electrical enclosure and how there are certain existing utilities that could impact that as well.
Thank you. There is a water line underground here. So, we would be putting our electrical panel on top of a Mesa Water District water line. And they may not want us to do that. However, it's an electrical item. It's not getting wastewater too close to potable water because there are state regulations on that. So, the electrical enclosure would go right here, and this would be striped, no parking, to allow Tony and Steve and the rest of everybody to put a parking space, to be able to pull up and do their weekly checks on runtime, et cetera. So, that's, those are my thoughts.
And one last, what's the dimension for that electrical enclosure with the antenna on top of it? I just want the board to be aware that there's going to be an enclosure in front of someone's property we're going to put in if you approve that location.
I can speak to that because I have an enclosure on my property. That antenna goes up 15 feet?
Yes, at least.
And that enclosure is probably three by 10 or more? Nah, maybe, I'm not sure.
Let me just say that that enclosure, the enclosure is growing these days. We are working on the Canyon Pump Station. And to take everything that is outside the enclosure now and building an enclosure long enough to put everything that's outside on the inside, we are 12 and a half feet long. Currently, we don't have an enclosure that's longer than eight feet. Their Canyon enclosure is going to be four and a half feet longer. Like I said, it's growing. The enclosure here would, though, be close enough to the wet well to take care of what Steve said about being, only having 50 feet of cable. The cable would be from the pumps up and go underground over to here. And like I said at the previous meeting, that, one of the limitations or drawbacks of this design is the odor control. If it's not perfect, we're going to get a complaint. And I do think that no matter what, at some point, we're going to get a complaint. Even if we put every, unless we go with a contained atmosphere, which is a little more expensive. But, those are the limitations, those are the drawbacks on this design. Large electrical enclosure, very high antenna. The antenna back here has got to be 20 feet high. So, a 20-foot-high antenna with a large enclosure there, water coming down this side, this would have to be over there. The odor control is a battle. But as Director Uden said, safety in construction and emergency response, this is number one. But, at some point, I will do, I will say this. If this is unlikable for some reason, and then we want to talk about these three, if we, if we go with the number-one plan that went out to bid, we need to put into the project over $800,000 more to build this. This one can probably almost be built with the money we have. This requires additional money too. Let me go back here where my finance information is. So, with, I'll just run right through it. With number one, we need $815,000 additional. Number two, less, we need less than $30,000 to build that. Thank you. Number three, we need $600,000 for that design. And number four, we need another $400,000 in the budget. So, we would be from $30,000 to $815,000 additional needed for this project, and that's above the $2 million that's already in there. So, I'm not happy about number one costing us a total project amount of approximately $2.8 million. So, the, those, there are limitations, drawbacks for each design. There are benefits to each design.
In scenario number two, you mentioned that that one might not protrude into easement onto the property, is that correct?
That is correct. This would be our biggest chance to steer clear of Mr. Bauer's property.
And that one's also the closest to the budget?
Correct.
And so, what are the benefits of one and three if two, you know, has those two positives to it?
Two, I don't, number two is the one that requires the structural analysis. That is, it's included in the budget. I'm sorry, the question was what?
So, there's three options for the construction of the pump station where it is now.
Right.
Why is one and three comparable to two, given that two is closest to the budget and it also does not protrude into easement and comes not property?
The reason, the reason is, we don't have any existing plans of the concrete structure that we are going to reuse as part of option two. So, we have to do a structural analysis of it, which includes kind of a sonar-type thing to see through the concrete and find out the amount of steel. And we have to analyze it, then we're going to have to go in and cut some walls out and put some beams and columns in. That's why it is, that's the limitations of number two.
Is it number two also provide us with the smallest emergency storage vault?
It's, it's, it's actually very close, they're all very close.
Okay.
And I don't think any of the designs have problems with downtime. They all, they all will be able to have two hours of downtime during peak flow, which is the standard in the industry.
Arlene has a question.
Yeah, I do. Out of all these plans, are there any plans for variances or encroachments of any type?
Very good. We of course would need a permit from the city to dig up in the public right-of-way. Whereas, the other three, the only thing we would be doing in public right-of-way would be fixing the driveway and sidewalk where you would leave President Culde-sac and go into the easement. There's no real, there's nothing that we would have to gain a discretionary approval because we're trying to shortcut something. So, there's really no variance or no problems per se that we haven't already addressed. We have to make the sidewalk work for ADA, we have that figured out for, if we do option four. I think maybe you want to hear from your general manager as well. He's, I think he's now a sewer expert as well. So, his, I think his opinion should be considered as well.
Didn't you say four is, we're not going to do four?
What I'm saying is, is that the CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee, against it.
Okay.
The Neighborhood, against it. Our own maintenance crew, against it. The CAC said, before we tell you which one we like, we recommend to the board that you do not select the cul-de-sac. But, you go back to what Director Uden said about safety and emergency response. I myself waffle back and forth between these designs. I kind of feel that if we're not going to put it in the cul-de-sac, we should start with option two because that's the least expensive, the smallest footprint, it's the easiest to construct, and at least we're starting with the lowest cost. If we start with the highest. If we start with the highest cost and then run into trouble, we'll be over three million dollars. Which, we, we put the Irvine Pump Station in, in the street for two million dollars. I don't want to spend three million dollars to put it one or three. I'd rather start with the least expensive one, prove that the vault is okay, and then use this design, and it would satisf- I think that would satisfy everybody.
What would, what would it cost to do the analysis of that number two?
Uh, less than twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
We could actually do that now and then come back and make a decision. If the, if you want it in the back in the easement and the structure turns out to be no good, then you're back to one or three. But you could do, you could do the analysis first and then come back and make a decision, or make a decision and say, Rob, go design it, but do the analysis first. And we would do the analysis first as a first item of work and not do anything after that until we prove that it is structurally sound. So, I think, I, I think design two kind of meets everyone's acceptance.
Er, Elaine?
Is two the one that you said we have to talk to the Water District about if we're going to go?
No, that was in the cul-de-sac.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, if you, if you, CAC picked number two. And I like item, option two, it's the least expensive. So, if after all that, you say, let's help everyone who voted against the cul-de-sac, my recommendation will be option two.
Do you need, do you need direction on getting that analysis done? I think it's an important, I think we need to know what that wet well is.
It's in the budget. It, it, item two said, or option two said, we need to fund an additional thirty thousand, hopefully. And we, that would mean our budget would be two million, thirty thousand, which is the lowest it could be.
I think that data is important to make the decision.
Agreed.
But I don't favor one or three, so down to the.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that you, you get that analysis done ASAP, so the next time we address this process.
Second?
You need that analysis to, you know, to, to know whether you can even use that, that station or not.
That is correct.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second.
Just a quick question.
Another discussion.
Yeah, just real quick. We had planned on bringing this item back to next week's board meeting. Is that off the table?
If you direct, uh, Rob to do that analysis, we will not bring this back until the analysis is complete and they will share that with you.
And there's no, I mean, we're, we've been looking at this for quite some time, so delaying it an extra month or two is not going to break anybody's back, right?
Would you like to hear our general manager's recommendation?
Yes.
I think I already know it, but yeah, I'd like to hear it.
I, I, I would concur with, with Rob and the CAC on alternative number two. I think the, the, the CAC did a fabulous job of really engaging with Rob and asking a lot of good questions about all four alternatives. Uh, and they were, I was very, I was impressed with their, with their, this conversation, and they went with alternative number two. And then alternative number three as the second option if the analysis doesn't come back as we hoped for. My, my recommendation is what the CAC is recommending is go with alternative two as your number-one choice, and if the analysis doesn't, uh, work out, then we go to alternative number three.
And, and we could make this as a, just a discussion and bring back that to the board meeting if you want. That was what it says on the agenda, was for discussion and direction. But I suppose that the analysis of this, Scott has the authority for, I believe, that amount of money, and we could do that. So.
I agree with Bob.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it before we do anything.
All right, what are you saying, that, that we, we should?
He agrees with Director Ooten that the study should be done immediately.
Yeah, before we go any further with anything.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with that.
Rob, hold on with the analysis take.
How about a month? I mean, it's only, it's only thirty thousand and it's in the budget.
Yeah, Mark and I were just talking about, okay, how that would impact.
Oh, because we would be, right, if you decide to go to number one, see, right now, the budget is prepared with putting the eight hundred thousand into this.
The extra eight hundred thousand?
Right. So, we would amend the, we'd have to amend the budget. And because what the general manager's saying is, if we wait thirty days, the budget will be too far along to change.
But that doesn't make a difference if we go with a, at least, a less costly alternative. That just means we don't spend money.
That's correct.
Have money left over.
Yeah.
Is that doable?
Yes, we have projects lined up for the next two years. And if it turns out we go with option two and have the extra money, we have projects that could use the money.
Engineers can figure out a way to spend that money?
I did have that problem one time. The finance director said, Rob, give me a project for eight hundred thousand. So, we put another sewer line in Victoria Street.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Uh, I'm calling for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Um, I, I think we're doing the right thing and hopefully it's going to.
I agree.
Come out.
This is a, a very good step-by-step approach. And Mr. Bauer will be getting married in another week, and Steve and Tony know that, and they're going to wash down the station and lots of this and that.
It's your marriage?
Yeah, in our backyard.
But it's you being, getting married?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was your daughter or something. You're not old enough to have a daughter, that's all.
They have a great view of the pump station.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thanks for that.
Okay.
It's not too, it's not too late, it's not too late to talk to you about this marriage thing here, you're okay with it?
No, our plan is to be there for thirty-plus years, too, so we want to make sure that, you know, whatever keeps us, like, we have to harass and talk to the family and.
You heard what we had to say, and, uh, safety first.
Yeah.
That's, that's where it's at, so.
And, and, you know, when, when, when Tony and Steve spoke, um, you know, about blocking the cul-de-sac, that caught my attention, too. So, you know, whatever the decision is, just, you know.
Right.
I.
Well, listen, we will work with you and, and, but we do want your input all, all in a way.
My last comment is that I believe that option two takes the pressure off everyone because it's very hard for the guys to have a hundred percent odor control, a hundred percent not blocking driveways, the noise, the backup ding, 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 uh, and people scrutinizing their work. So, I, I do support the field crews.
Thank you, Rob, for your, your input on this, too. It was very valuable to me. Okay, let's move along, uh, construction inspection program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and Rob, if I can have you sit in the audience on this item, that'd be great, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. President, Board Director. So, as you may recall, back on February twelfth, uh, Rob Hamers submitted a proposal to the board to reinstate his firm to be the, the district's construction inspections, uh, inspection services. However, as you know, there was concerns with District Council and myself regarding preventing wages, and, and the board directed, um, Rob to go back and review, um, preventing wage requirements and re-submit, um, revised proposal, which he has done, and it is attached to your staff report. What staff is proposing is really a, a hybrid approach that we believe it will be a win-win for both the district and for, um, Rob Hamers and Associates. And to kind of, to briefly go over that, uh, approach. Right now, we have a private firm providing inspection services to us, it's Anderson Penna, and they're responsible for inspecting private development, uh, as well as public work projects. And public works project is basically any project that's using public funds. Uh, it could be R.C.I.P. projects, it could be some, our, our minor public works projects, it could be, um, City Costa Mesa's, uh, manhole raising projects, it could be Irvine Ranch Water District, you know, maybe they're, they're doing a sewer project or a waterline project that's next to our sewer main and we have to just go out there and inspect it. Anything that has public money is considered a public works, works project. So, right now, Anderson Penna is, is providing that service for us at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, which is well above the current preventing wage rate for construction inspection at, at just under seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, because, uh, this is a preventing wage, um, job, the, the inspections, Anderson Penna is required to, uh, register with the California Department of Industrial Relations, otherwise, as we know, as PWC one-hundred form, uh, which, when you do that, they give you, um, an ID number, and then you, the, the contractors use that ID number to reference their certified payroll that they have to submit to the state to, to ensure that they're, they're paying preventing wage. So, Anderson Penna does that right now. What, um, in Rob's proposal, uh, he does mention, um, his private development's, um, hourly rate at sixty-five dollars an hour. And as it's, as because it's private development, it does not require, um, Rob does not to, um, file, uh, the PWC form, um, because it is private, uh, development does not require, uh, public funding. What, um, the hybrid approach would look like is, uh, Rob would be responsible for all private development, okay? At the sixty-five dollars an hour. And then, um, for the public works projects, uh, my recommendation is that we enter a contract with the County of Orange Public Works Department to provide, uh, inspection service on the public works projects. Now, we did approach OCSD as our first choice to do this. Uh, unfortunately, they just don't have the capacity. In fact, they're hiring out, um, private inspectors as well because they have so much work. So, that was our first choice, I did want to let you know. So, we actually, so then we reached out to the county, and the county says, yes, we can do that for you. And they gave us, uh, which is attached in your staff report, their hourly inspection, the fully burdened hourly inspection rate, which is ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two, sixty-two cents, which is immediate savings to, to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So, my recommendation is, is that, uh, we, uh, enter a contract with the County of, of, of Public Works, and I foresee that to be at least for one year. Because during that one year, uh, we, that, that inspector, along with Rob's, um, institutional knowledge, would pass on to, um, our engineering technician, uh, Val Vaughn, who has expressed interest of being our, our district's inspector. In fact, he's currently doing, going to training right now. He's just completed courses at, uh, Santiago Canyon College on the public works certification, on emphasizing for inspections. He's, uh, going to webinars for the American Public Works Association's on inspection service. So, he's, he is getting that, that skills required for inspections, and then, along with him, um, getting training from Rob and from the county, I believe within one year, he can become that, that inspector. As you see in your staff report, and you'll hear later, uh, this afternoon, we did a, um, a salary compensation, uh, survey from a consultant of all our positions, and that consultant is recommending, uh, that the engineering technician could, uh, take on that responsibility of inspection services, and that position will be, um, reclassified as engineer tech, engineer technician slash construction inspector. And as you see in the staff report, the fully burdened rate for that would be around fifty-seven dollars an hour, which is basically half of what we're currently paying right now for public works projects. So, the recommendation is, um, again, that hybrid approach where, where Rob would do the private development inspections, um, the county would do our public works inspections for about a year, and then the district would take over on that inspection services, uh, from then on. And then, when the inspector, our inspector when Val's on vacation or on leave or sick leave or vacation, then Rob can be that alternate, um, inspector for us, and he would charge us the preventing wage rate of eight, ninety-eight dollars an hour. Uh, the total cost is, is very minimal. Uh, the total cost, if we go with, uh, the county for one year, um, estimating about ninety-eight thousand dollars it would cost us, uh, and that's assuming, uh, a thousand hours a year of inspections for public works projects. And then, for, uh, Rob Hamers, uh, I'm ex, we're estimating about fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand dollars, uh, for, for private development. To hire, um, or to reclassify, um, the engineering technician to engineering technician slash construction inspector, the additional cost will only be about thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, also, the good news about this, I know previously we talked about this, there was a possibility we'd have to hire an additional body, so we'd have an inspector and an engineering technician. With this private proposal, we don't have to hire an additional body because Val can do both those services of an engineering technician along with, um, inspection services. There are some additional one-time expenses. I do recommend we, um, purchase another vehicle, like a, another hybrid or, um, a vault or Ford Focus, I think I've had in there, is electric vehicle for fifty-three thousand dollars. I also recommend, um, uh, the wireless tablet, um, that can be used out in the field so he can, uh, maintain his inspection logs, that's about twenty-seven hundred dollars, another six thousand dollars for a vehicle charger. So, those are all one-time expenses. Um, so, um, that is what I'm recommending today. There's, uh, actually, if you, on your staff report, there's about five recommendations for you to consider. Uh, don't have to consider those today, um, but if you like that, the direction we're going to, then staff recommends you bring this back, we'll bring this back to you for the twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth, for your consideration. I did share this hybrid approach with Rob. Um, we've had that conversation, Rob does support, and I can have Rob comment on this. Rob supports the hybrid approach. Um, so, um, have they answered any questions or have any questions for Rob? We're, we're available to, to answer those questions, so conclude my presentation.
I'd like to hear from Rob. How, how it's different from what we're doing now is an advantage for us.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. That was a very good presentation by our general manager. And I'm a team player, so I will always do what's best for the team. And I think that Scott's approach is brilliant in that it's the best for the district, which means the best for all of us. I do like Val Vaughn and who would, as you heard, will be the CNSD employee who will be working towards construction inspector. I've worked with him since he started here, and I, we do training twice a month for an hour or so. And he does have a mechanical engineering degree. He may end up being a registered engineer, but he's a good man, and I support the growth of his position and his knowledge. I think it's very important to, uh, this consideration. So, I'm not going to stand up here and say, give it all to me. I'm going to say, it sounds like what's best for everyone is Scott's hybrid approach, so I am in support of it.
Any questions or comments, Bob?
Uh, so you, you would provide personnel that would fill in, uh, when Val wasn't available?
Right. Uh, we would actually have, we would have a part-time inspector to inspect the private development and also provide backup for Val. So, it would be, we're splitting the pie somewhere near a half, and then each side could pick up from the other side if there was a problem.
Succession plan that Scott outlined said in, in a year, Val would be capable of doing the inspecting. How much time of Val's would that require?
Val seems to think that in his current schedule, he can get everything done, if that's what your question is.
You mean with the time that he, he has the time to do all of this?
Yes, to do his plan reviews. Yes, to do his plan reviews, and he works with, I'm probably, he and I constitute the plan check team, and he, he has his role in that. Maybe it could be done sooner than a year. I'm not sure of Bal's level in his programs. I've already, always encouraged him to go out with our current Anderson Penna inspector, Dave Roan. I've encouraged Bal to go out there, and I've met Bal out at a number of job sites already. I think he could be ready sooner than a year. I think Scott picked a year, I don't think Orange County Public Works would accept a six-months contract or something. But, if you were to say, let's do it as fast as possible, send Bal out now with Dave, get some training, and not hire the county. Just turn Bal loose now, 'cause...
Okay.
I, I could back him up, et cetera.
Any other questions? Right here, we need a motion.
So, I'm not hearing the objections, so if it's all of the board, I'll put these recommendations back on the, on the 25th for, for considerations, okay?
Is this a consent calendar item, or are you gonna put it on the regular agenda?
Excuse me?
Are you gonna put it on the regular agenda or the consent calendar?
I'll put it on the regular, unless you want a consent, I'll put it on the regular agenda.
I just cares.
It would be May of 2019, not May of 2020. Just kidding.
You know, I've, I've got to, I've gotta leave this meeting.
Okay.
So, I don't know if...
And I have to go also.
So, maybe we oughta postpone the classification compensation study.
That's fine, the, the, actually, the consultant that was supposed to be here to give that study got caught up in traffic, so we were gonna have him come back at the April board meeting, so maybe that works out fine.
Okay.
We could do that, sure.
So...
I think it's complicated enough that we probably do need a study session item.
Just, just for that.
Is there a budget constraints?
It is tied in the budget, that's why we were trying to get, we can give you, we can give you a quick $30,000 level type overview of it, and then, you know, if you have some detailed questions that we can't ask, we can't answer, we can always refer to the consultant next week.
Okay.
You want to do that, or do you want, or we could just wait and just do the whole thing in one, one shot at the, at the board meeting next week?
I'd prefer...
While we do the report?
I, I think it's gonna take longer than to...
I, I agree with our, I think it's gonna take some good disca, Diana's put together a pretty good report, it's pretty comprehensive. I, I think it's gonna take more than a quick board meeting.
Can you, can you move it to the May, to the May study session? Is there time for that?
Well, I'll go through to my, what do you think?
I could quickly go over right now, and then maybe you could think of questions to bring to the board meeting.
Caitlin, what do you think? If you go to the May, it'll be okay.
You guys, I need to leave.
You know, that's gonna be tough because we're, we're planning to present the, the budget, the CAC, in, in May, mid-May. Yeah, if, if we can't do it today, we would like to do it on the board meeting and get some direction from the board on the board meeting.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
I think we can do that, but by that time we'll have time, more time to think about.
Yeah, we, we'd like to give, present to you next week.
Okay, then oral communications and director comments. Anybody have any real quick?
Just real quick, thank you for giving me a retirement program, Diana. I got my confirmation letter from CalPERS, so I guess I'm in the, the program. Thank you for your help.
That'll be $81,000.
You know what? It's better than what I'm getting now.
Okay, I believe that's all we have, so I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.